Now we'll have the College of Alameda presentation to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Board President. Well, first of all, we're so pleased to be on the island. Thank you so much to the College of Alameda for this really incredible opportunity for us to do our campus visit and study session tonight. Before we begin with the College of Alameda presentation, I want to take a moment to just reflect on the fact that us coming to these colleges and doing these remote meetings, as President Goldstein said, are a lot of work. And so again, want to recognize, first of all, the Proust TV team and everybody who's worked behind the scenes on those areas and setups. Certainly our board clerks, but let's give it up for our College of Alameda team. First of all, want to say thank you to Nikki Hereda, Chung Wai Chum, Chantel Nathaniel, Selwyn Montgomery, the IT team, Bala Sumputraj, Sorav Pudasegney, and Sean Foster, our custodial team, which includes Karan Dixon and many of other custodial folks, and the grounds team, David Haynes, for all of his support. I also want to recognize our vice presidents, Dr. Nicole Porter and Dr. Mildred Lewis, for their support for this visit. And certainly want to thank again the esteemed college president, I'm going to turn it over to in one second. We also had the joy of an incredible campus tour before the board sat down tonight with you all. And so I want to thank, some of them will be presenting tonight, but certainly want to thank our team from Robin Construction, Spencer Zach and Anthony Almano, who gave us a tour of the new Transportation Center, Drew Burgess, Professor Burgess, for the look at the gallery. And then also Jeremy Simmons for the Basic Needs Tour that we were able to do, and Professor Derek Piazza from the Apparel Design and Merchandising Program. Thank you on behalf of myself and the Board of Trustees for such a warm welcome and an awesome opportunity to really get to see the gem that is here, right here on the island. And so now I will turn over to the illustrious President, President Melanie Dixon. Thank you so much again.
Thank you so much. Thank you and welcome. Welcome. Good evening, President Quinn Lynn, members of the board, Chancellor Gilkerson, our esteemed faculty, classified professionals, community, and beloved students. We are so happy to have you here tonight, really enjoy the tour, and really excited to bring forward the work of our faculty and our classified professionals this evening. So we hope that you had opportunity today with it being Earth Day to celebrate. One of our faculty members put on a session for celebrating Asian Pacific Islander Desi American Heritage Month, but also identifying the sustainability of food and Apeeta. So I really, really appreciate that work that she did, and I hope you all had the opportunity to celebrate. I want to take a moment just to reiterate the thanks to the COA team that made this evening possible. A lot of time and effort went into this, specifically with our presenters. So really excited about that work that we get to highlight. And it's only some of the amazing things that COA has to offer. I want to also talk about the recognition on behalf of our college as it relates to the showcase in general. I think you've heard this from Goldstein around the importance of going around to the colleges and validating or affirming the work that's happening. And certainly in our tour today, we got to stand in one of the facilities that you all have made possible for us, which is our new Transportation Center. So thank you so much. This evening, you all will learn about COA's very own apparel design and merchandising programs, better known to us as ADAM. And in this particular program, we have phenomenal leaders in our faculty ranks, one of which tonight will be presenting to you, and that is Professor Derek Piazza. But I'd be remiss for not acknowledging another one of his colleagues, which is OJ Roundtree, who has been a part of this program and a highly revered faculty member at COA. After learning more about this implementural program, you will receive a presentation from Jeremy Simmons, who serves as COA's Basic Needs Program Coordinator. And he serves in this capacity under Director Rodriguez. And this support service provides critical needs to students now more than ever. These services provided in our Basic Needs areas ensures that all of our students are able to have the ability to have a successful academic journey at COA. I want to thank you all again for joining us this evening and want to take the opportunity to introduce you to Professor Piazza, who will share with you our apparel design and merchandising program. Please join me in welcoming him up to the podium.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to show off our amazing fashion design program and the work of our amazing fashion students. As I was introduced, my name is Derek Piazza, and I am the Department Chair in the Apparel Design and Merchandising Program here at the College of Alameda. And you can see with the heart jumping over, we love our fashion program very much, and we love our fashion students as well. I want to start it off by saying a quote from Howard Thurman, African-American philosopher and author. He says, "Do not ask what the world needs, ask what makes you come alive, and go and do that." Because what the world needs are people who have come alive. And this is the quote that we bring to our students who come to life in our program creatively, and we get to see them grow in our two-year program. Oops, this one was set in there here. That's fine. We have a, let me give you a rundown of what the program actually is. The ADAM program offers fundamental and advanced training in fashion design from collection development through production, and including merchandising and retail. Our affordable, industry-driven curriculum meets current trends and technology in an ever-expanding field. And we are expanding, in this case, in dual enrollment. We are in Oakland School for the Arts, we are in Oakland Tech, and we also have affiliations with Oakland High and Skyline as well. So we're teaching the next generation of fashion designers right here in Bay Area high schools. We can take a look at some of the work here. This is of our upcoming graduating student Jonathan Salick. And taking the skills that he learned to actually create garments of his own for his own collection, these are designs from Shiva Sultani, where she's created from inspiration all the way through garments that are ready for showing and in her portfolio as well. And what we love to tell people is that when students join our program, they do not have to have any prior experience at all. We teach them everything they know to be successful. And again, Jonathan Salick, and these are some of his work here. We do have student collaborations with our sister college, Laney College. We work with their cosmetology and their photography department to help actually actualize and bring to life all the inspiration and ideas for our students. Another example of work by Shiva Sultani. And the training that we talked about, that I mentioned, is starts with generating an idea. What is the stu, what is she inspired by? And then taking that inspiration, bringing it into fruition, making patterns through it, through the process of pattern making, which is a two-dimensional way of working. It's working with two-dimensional paper patterns to a three-dimensional dress form or garment. And they also learn the skill of pattern draping, which is working the other way. It's working from three dimensions to two dimensions. So they're actually building, shaping, sculpting, and molding their garments right on a dress form. And we love that we're able to give them that skill, which is transferable to all of the skills that they are going to be needing when they move into the fashion industry and ready for the workforce. We have a portfolio development class. And by the time the students get to this point, their garments, their collections are ready for their portfolio. And this is part of Shiva Sultani's portfolio. And students love to have their own photo shoots in addition to, as I said, working in conjunction with Laney College. But they're able to have their own and get their portfolios in order. And what we love about what we teach our students is that they're actually able to, while they're in school, take what they've learned and start making clothing from it. They work in conjunction with the Fab Lab, and they begin to make their product, sell their product to local brick and mortar stores, as well as online shops as well. Our catchphrase is, "Where will ADAM take you? Where will you go? What will you do with what you've learned in the apparel design and merchandising program?" And people can take it in so many different ways and directions, meaning they can go in the more creative way direction, they can have it more technical direction as well. We have Halim Aleki as fashion and beauty vlogger. We have Kaleo Lani Diego, who is graduated in 2019, and he started his own brand. And he has pop-up shops all over San Francisco and all over the East Bay. And he has actually hired some of our students to assist him in his creative endeavors for his company Nabuha. And what we love about our graduates is that they find that they want to give back to our program. And that allows them to come back and become ADAM Advisory Board members. Jessica Rakhetti being another one of them, graduating in 2006 Advisory Board member. She is the Senior Design Manager at Lululemon, taking a more creative route. You'll see here all of the varieties of jobs that people have, directions they've gone into. Molly Nicola, who's Associate Designer at Eddie Bauer, another ADAM Advisory Board member. What do we love, what we love about our Advisory Board members is not only do they advise us on best practices in fashion design, but they come back and they actually are able to speak to our students. And they, some of them come back onsite, which is what most of our classes are. But we also have four online classes, and some of them are in other parts of the world. So they actually zoom in and give our students the best practices of what's happening in their job and in their realm of the fashion industry. Here we've got a US Navy veteran, Ben Bell, 2016 ADAM graduate. He's now Head of Digital Innovation and Development at Levi's. And it was his work with our program, as well as the Fab Lab, that allowed him to use the laser etching machine, which most places don't have. He was able to amp up his portfolio, and that's what got him noticed at Levi Strauss. And he's been there ever since, working his way up. And it's very kind of him to give quotes like, "Enrolling and completing the ADAM program is the single best investment I made for myself," he says, "and my career. I am now head of my department." And he comes and speaks as well. More students, and where they've gone more recently, 2020 ADAM graduate, Liliendo is Sample Coordinator at Athleta. We took a field trip to the Design Center, and Lily ended up making a contact there while she was still in school and landed a job at the San Francisco Design Center based on our field trip. It was very exciting, and that does happen. Verly Carmack, 2023 ADAM graduate, who was our valedictorian a couple years ago. Wonderful. So proud of Verly. And Verly was generous enough to give us a quote, which was, "ADAM instructors wanted us to be successful. I felt guided to do my best. I was able to learn the magic of fashion design in an instructive way." Jeremiah Cobbs, who was showing off his sportswear and motor gear. He showed that off when he graduated in Paris, this was before lockdown, and his company is doing so well, Javan Troy. He was able to create his logo while he was in our portfolio development class, which is partly about creating your brand. We have Seema Bhuj, who right here in Alameda is the Quality Expediter at Janine's Bridal. And our program, in one form or another, has been around since about 1965. One of our first graduates was Claire Schaefer. Claire Schaefer is a renowned haute couture expert, author, and lecturer in Palm Springs, California. And I had the privilege of working with her and learning under her tutelage. It was absolutely wonderful, and she's so generous to our program. Few more of the graduates, Harrison Lamont, visual merchandiser at Banana Republic. Again, you can see where students take this in a creative direction. Some go into a more technical direction, and some end up in retail as well. Mona Dangre, who is a freelance cosplay designer. She worked really hard in the program, as all of our students do, and this is what she gained from it. She says, "The ADAM program enhanced my creative life. As a cosplay designer, I was able to expand my business in more sustainable ways." And we do have wonderful student collaborations that have been going on for nearly 10 years, if not more, with our very own Fab Lab. Students go over there, there's probably there right now, where they're able to use the 3D printer to create buttons and accessories for their collections, even hangers. They use the very unique die sublimation, also known as a die submachine, to design original printed fabric in my class and in my colleague OJ Roundtree's classes, and then go over and actually print it out. And including laser etched denim. You remember US Navy veteran Ben Bell actually used their laser, which most places, colleges do not have, and, and really show, be trained on it and use it in a creative way. And that was one of the reasons that Levi Strauss, he caught Levi Strauss's eye. And this is an example, Hannah Gilson, she's a 2025 upcoming graduate. She, she won second place in our fashion show, and she actually printed all of these in the Fab Lab. And she began, in her first year in the program, she began selling all of her garments online and started her own small business. And we have connections with Levi Strauss. I worked for Levi Strauss in part of my, my career for two years. So I have many connections there still. And they are so generous that they give us their sustainability donations from their dead stock, which is just inventory that has not been sold and remains in storage, often becoming obsolete or outdated. And what you can see here from the denim that was donated, we have Shiva Sultani, who was our first place winner, using that denim for her collection as well. So it helps student in that, students in that way. And we have, this may be the last slide here, but I'm proud to announce that beginning spring 2020 sticks, the entire ADAM program will be CSU transfer level so that transferring ADAM graduates will spend less time and money obtaining their BA degree. And usually they go to San Francisco State. So we're so excited about that. And I believe that's the last slide there. I thank you for your time, everyone. And again, welcome to the College of Alameda trustees. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We love seeing where students end up after they take programs at COA. So pretty impressive where our students arrive and the different journeys. I'd like to welcome now Jeremy Simmons, who is overseeing our Basic Needs Services.
Thank you so much for having me today. Give this little talk about basic needs here at COA. This is where I spend most of my waking hours in this space, so it's nice to see it filled with all you guys here. There we are. So basic needs here at COA, I like to say it's a holistic student-centered approach towards helping the students kind of meet the basics so that they can focus on their education. Our, I like to say that our basic needs is built on three pillar programs, that being the market, Tasty Tuesday, and our one-stop shop, which is our pantry space. When available, we also do other types of support. We do emergency food grants, emergency aid, Wi-Fi hotspots, and we've developed some other new types of grants to help students kind of fill the gaps where things like just food don't do. So one of our main pillar programs is the market. What the market is, is a bimonthly outdoor market. I've turned it in or tried to turn it into, along with help from so many other people, into like a farmer's market. So we have usually two to three types of bulk produce that we can give out to students, along with some grocery basics, rice and beans, pasta, pasta sauce, milk, those sorts of things. I, what we do, it's evolved into this, we get all of this from the local Alameda County Community Food Bank for free. And we take anything that's extra and leftover and put it into our pantry so we have stock in our pantry for the next couple of weeks until we have another distribution. Some of the numbers I'm going to cite in this presentation are as of the end of March. So it's not quite the full academic year, but it will be the, the academic year since fall 2024 to the end of March. So since then, we have serviced through our market, just our outdoor, bimonthly market, over 1,200 students. It's not unique students, that's just 1,200 people that have come through the market. We actually just had it today right outside back of this building. This is a little bit of what it looks like. Our bulk produce bins, our tables with various dry goods, canned goods. I think that was a cold day. As an offshoot of the market, we also, during the holidays, have a free chicken dinner program. It's essentially frozen chickens that we pass out to students if and when available. We also have side dishes for the holidays. But we do this during the holidays, once in November, once in December. We've been doing it for two to three years now, I think. This year alone, we distributed in two distributions, two days, over 1,500 pounds of frozen chickens. I was really happy that this year the food bank had some other frozen chicken options. So a quarter of those chickens were actually halal chickens. So we set those aside for our Muslim students that were looking for something more specific to their diet. We also coordinated with staff at the aviation maintenance facility to conduct both sign-ups and distribution of chickens at that campus too, because a lot of times those students don't get all the way over here to our campus. So one of our big, another pillar program is Tasty Tuesday, which is a free lunch program for students. We've been doing this for the last two years, I believe. So every Tuesday, usually in this space, we give out about 200 lunches to students. Sometimes a little bit less, sometimes a little bit more. We also use Tasty Tuesday as a platform for other constituents, either outside the campus sometimes, but also mostly inside, to either do presentations or do tableings to get out information about their programs. I have a list here of all the different partners we've had. Today, we had ASCO, the local, or sorry, the student government doing some outreach for their club drive. And then we also had someone here from the Alameda County Community Food Bank doing cow fresh outreach. So far since fall 2004, 2000, I'm sorry, 2024, this, this academic year, we've given out over 5,000 lunches. It's actually quite a bit more because I stopped in March. One of the things I'm really proud about, about this program is we use local, small businesses. And by local, I mean really local. Three of the usual vendors are within walking distance of the campus. Almost all of them are, well, they all are incredibly thankful for the support that we're giving them, and we're giving back to the community. There's all of the other ones that we use for this. I have about a rotating group of seven different food vendors. The other ones aren't more than like a mile away in Oakland or downtown Oakland. So they're all very nearby. So we're giving back to the community as well. So as a little ancillary program to Tasty Tuesdays, during finals, I started this thing called Snacks for Finals. Basically, we just have a table and a little fridge filled with snacks that students can come by during finals week and pick up snacks when and if they need it. It's basically just grab and go. You can kind of pick up anytime during the day. They don't have to do any sort of check-in process or anything like that. I just want them to know what's here for them to support them during finals. We have, I mean, it's mostly junk food, but it's, you know, chips, cookies, and sodas, that sort of stuff. But that's what they want during finals, right? Got to get through. We've done this the last two semesters. We started last spring, we did it last fall, and I'm going to be doing it again this spring as well. So our third pillar program is our one-stop shop. And our one-stop shop is our permanent indoor pantry space. And I say permanent indoor because for so long we were just doing kind of outdoor giveaways and distributions and pop-ups. But now we have this permanent indoor space. It's back in the back corner of this building. It's open every day except Tuesday because we're busy with Tasty Tuesdays. So it's open every day from 10 to 4:00. Students can visit once a week. Everything in there is free for students. We have a variety of food items that are left over from our market distributions, including fresh produce. We keep some fresh produce on hand for them. We have three or four clothing racks of clothes, shoes, hats. We also have a kind of a wall of personal care items that they can pick from as well. And like I said, they can visit once a week and shop through what we have. Let's see, we had our grand, so we did kind of a soft lunch in the late summer and early fall to kind of just see how things were working. And then we had our grand opening about midway through last semester on October 2nd. And yeah, I mean, I was really happy. It's, it was a kind of a labor of love to get the space up and going and functional. And so in the first two and a half months of being operational, so it was like a half a semester or so, we had almost 396 visitors to the one-stop shop. 344 of them were shopping for food, 321 for personal care items, 79 for clothing. In the fall, we are averaging approximately 9.7 visits a day. Now, we are, I'm seeing that trending up. We've already seen in the first two months of this semester, it's up to 300, almost 350, this is 330. And our visits per day are up to 11.9. We've had, like yesterday, we had 23 people come through, which is a pretty busy day in that space. Let's see. So part of our one-stop shop is the boutique. At one point, we didn't know if the boutique was going to exist in and of itself or if it was going to be under this umbrella. But as a side initiative of the boutique, the boutique this year, we had our coat drive, our first coat drive here on the campus. We collaborated with the office VPSS to get out these bins all around campus during the holidays. We distribute them, you know, right before the end of the semester. We ended up gathering 75 warm coats and 45 kind of light coats and hoodies. We ended up gathering seventy-five warm coats and forty-five kind of light coats and hoodies. The real underlying sort of message and what we wanted to do is this was to make sure families could get warm coats, or so students could get warm coats for their families as well. So children, we also had a wide variety of children's coats. We ended up giving out thirty-two warm coats to students and thirty-two, nice even numbers, to their children. So that's sixty-four people that had coats for the winter seasons. And that was just our first attempt, so I think next time it's going to be even bigger. So some of the other services that we have here that are extremely important, one of the most is this emergency food grant. Essentially, what that is, is three hundred dollars in Safeway gift cards. Students can apply for that and they're eligible to receive that once in their time as a student. It's very popular, but also very needed. So far this semester, or I'm sorry, since fall two thousand twenty-four, we've given out, I can't read it anymore, almost twenty-seven, almost thirty thousand dollars. And we've actually given out more because I've been giving them out the last few weeks a lot. And we've helped almost a hundred students. We also have an emergency aid grant for, that can go anywhere from one hundred up to five hundred dollars. We do that with a partner agency that helps fund it. That's specifically for students that have encountered unforeseen circumstance that they need help to kind of get past. We do Wi-Fi hotspots as well. We have given almost ninety, let's ninety-two, but almost a hundred Wi-Fi hotspots since the fall. Again, it's a service that's for students that are on, in online classes. It's, you know, it really is a basic need, they need to have a stable Wi-Fi connection. These were, I just put this in here because this was on my presentation when I made it last year, and this was some of our future plans. And you can see what I have here is, we had a plan to release some new grants, which we did last month, finally. Obviously, we built out our permanent indoor pantry. If you look close, you can see it was kind of a little bare bones back then. And then we ordered some new furniture for this space to make it a little bit more comfortable and kind of invite people to be and stay here longer in the space. All of those I see as, you know, green checkmarks are successes for me because this time last year, none of this existed, but it does now. And these are some of our future plans for basic needs here at COA. And one of them is happening next week, and that's a flea market. Our racks right now in our boutique are overflowing, thanks to local support, but also like local community support, but also, you know, students, staff, faculty, everyone kind of drops off clothes for us that we could use in our boutique. But we have too much right now. So in this space, next week, during our lunch, we're going to be having a big flea market out here where students can come through and just pour through everything. And yeah, we're hoping to get some new grants. I'm working as hard as I can on trying to get some sort of solution to some housing funding, whether it be like an emergency voucher to stay in a hotel or rental deposit assistance. It's an ongoing problem, it's probably one of the biggest problems, but it's a really hard one to solve. But I'm finally starting to make some headway there. We also hope to possibly expand the pantry because I can already tell we could use more space. And then I'd really like to have evening hours for our basic needs center as well. So anytime when we have evening supervision here with our administrators, I'd like to figure out a way for us to keep the space open because we do have night classes and plenty of those students don't really get to be here during the normal day. I think that's my last slide.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate Jeremy's efforts. And again, this is activity, basic needs, really important for our district and some of the work that our chancellor has done at the state level. So really appreciate that work as well, and I will turn it back over to you.
You've heard that incredible presentation, and one another round of applause for the College of Alameda showcase. Thank you so much. So Board President, I'll turn it back to you if there's any questions.
Jeremy, yeah. Thank you so much for that presentation. Really excited to hear about how, on the basic needs, Jeremy, I had a question. Where'd you go? About, there was one slide that talked about CalFresh outreach. I wonder if you could say a little bit more about that? And do we make referrals for other types of public benefits or partners who might help with that?
Absolutely. We try to do as much as possible as far as outside referrals. I start inside because I can get more immediate help to them, you know, within what we have. But if not, then we will refer them to outside agencies. Hopefully as local as possible because the kind of farther out you expand into the county, it gets harder and harder for them to access services. As far as CalFresh goes, that is not one of my areas of expertise. I will try to my best to get a student started in that process. But I know we have community partners like our food bank who does CalFresh enrollment. So I will have them here to get out that information, follow up with students. And then as we go, if those students need any further assistance, I will work with them individually if needed. But like I said, it's not my specialty. Or I will refer them to the food bank where they do have specialists to do that.
Thanks for the presentation, both the ADAM program and the basic needs. I want to ask specifically about basic needs. And Chancellor, I know this is an area where you have a lot of expertise. I'm wondering, at College Valameda and then in the rest of Peralta, how do we understand this problem at a more universal level? Like, it's good to get the granular, here's one concrete thing that we're doing. When we look at the overall student population, what do we understand about basic needs and how that's impacting their ability to be successful as students?
It's a really great question. Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez-Uen. So I'm actually excited because we actually have an opportunity to see this data upfront very soon here. So we just launched the twenty twenty-five survey, Real College California, Real Lived Experiences of College Students. And I'm proud to say that the four colleges in this district, including College of Alameda, participated in robust outreach to students to get student voices to participate in the statewide survey. That survey closed a week and a half ago, and so we are beginning statewide data analysis. But what is exciting is that here on our campus, we have, in our district, we have access to the aggregate data, looking at thirty-two indices across basic needs and securities, looking at these things. We know statewide in the twenty twenty-three survey, two out of every three community college students said they had a basic needs insecurity, either housing homelessness or food insecurity. So we're updating that data, and we had much greater participation from the students in the Peralta Community College District. So hope to have a data presentation to the board very soon to understand some of those unique questions and be able to, again, work with our incredible team of basic needs coordinators, our college leadership teams, to be able to design and understand how we can actually do what Jeremy talked about, which is what are the right partnerships? How do we bring CalFresh applications directly to this campus when we have it on other campuses where they're doing the direct outreach and signups at their campuses, right? Using best practices across the wing. So we hope to have very clear, updated information to present to the board here at the beginning of the next academic year.
Thank you. There are two particular areas that I personally am interested in. And one has to do with housing needs. The second thing then is when we look at the basic, basic needs that students have, how do we understand specifically how that impacts their ability to be successful? And in particular, I'm thinking, how does that impact their investment in study? So as you do that work, I'm looking forward to hearing those particular areas.
Yeah, we're excited for the nuanced data. So the statewide data did show that when students had less of a basic needs insecurity, there was greater levels, right, of As and Bs, passing grades and success in terms of course outcomes. But what we saw is that there was a direct correlation that working didn't actually mean that students' basic needs insecurities went down, that actually the more hours they worked didn't mean that they were any less insecure. So we, and we live in, in this part of the state, a very high cost of living, you know, area. So, you know, looking at solutions for housing that are, can serve a greater number of population and work with public agencies and other people in our community and looking at that correlation. So those are questions that are in the basic need survey that just was completed. And so we'll have some better answers, at least to sort of see. And then we can decide to follow up with focus groups or other things to better understand how we can support our students.
That's super helpful. And, you know, the real specific area that I'm always interested in is the actual number of hours that students are putting in to learning and to try to understand those two correlations. So, thanks.
Chancellor, in our earlier discussions, you were talking about the state is, in the current budget, is cutting our, the basic need allocations to the colleges across the state. Can you suggest ways that both as a board and as a community, we can advocate for more resources and to make sure that they understand the depth of this problem and how, you know, what as a board and a community, we can do to advocate for our students?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, Board President Quinlan. So first of all, I want to just clarify the statement I made. And one is that when we have partners, right? So over the last number of years, the colleges have worked very hard. Jeremy gave a perfect example of years where we didn't actually have a food pantry before, and now we have a pantry, right? That needs to be continually stocked and do these things. We work with partner agencies. My thank goodness for the Alameda County Food Bank and the work that they do. But across the state, Cal food in the state budget has been cut. That means they have less money to support community clinics and the regular food outreach that they do on a day-to-day basis. So we're supporting advocacy that isn't necessarily directly community college budget, but has a huge impact on the fact of what we're able to leverage through the partnership. And so I wanted to just clarify that one point. So oftentimes while we're, you know, we're calling on the trustees and our community to advocate, we have to look with a little wider aperture at the fact that there are many places in the community that intersect what we do, so social services and those places. And everything in our most recent twenty twenty-three report was the fact that we aren't doing enough to braid resources and these things. We're very siloed in the way that we're doing. So we're looking and calling on policymakers, boards of trustees and other things to vocalize the needs of our students. That's why we do the survey. So my goal really is for you all, is that as soon as we're done with our survey data and we have the statewide data, that the trustees that we're working together with, one, to educate the community about those things, reaching out for ways that we can actually partner and not have duplicative, you know, services where maybe social services could come here on the campuses and do things. So there's a lot of wide ranges where the trustees can actually make connections and then advocate both in Sacramento and locally to get more resources and coordinated support for our students. You know, Prop ninety-eight is a small budget. We're being asked more and more as community colleges to do lots and lots of things, the work around basic needs insecurities and the statewide development of that in the budget. And we don't know what budgets will be before, has been pretty immense since twenty eighteen, right? If you blink your eye and look back, we weren't doing this work before. This is a huge portfolio of what we're doing. And you heard our basic needs coordinator say last year, right? We have little state funding to do this. And I'm grateful, so please, if anybody's going to put this online, hear me. I'm really, really grateful, right, to the legislature and folks for supporting our efforts, but it's not necessarily enough, right? Where are the supplies and the foods? When we look at things like the fifty percent law and all of these pieces, these are things that we're grappling is where we can purchase the things that help support our students. How do we have categorical funds and those pieces? So we'll certainly work on a full advocacy plan for the Board of Trustees when we get more data.
On that point, I think you should use us. I would be very happy to connect you with community organizations that do the types of referrals around public benefits. So the Unity Council comes to mind. I think they would be a great resource and would probably be happy to come in and be able to help connect students to those types of resources.
Thank you. You good? All right. Well, thank you so much to the College of Alameda team. Thank you, President Dixon. Thank you, Professor Piazza, and thank you, our basic needs coordinator, Jeremy Simmons.